All right, the time is now 6 o'clock. It is Tuesday, August 12th. We are in the Board of Selectment meeting room and I'd like to open the Board of Selectment meeting here for the Town of Halifax. With me is Bill Smith, Thomas Pratt, myself Jonathan Seelig, our interim Town Administrator Bob Fennessey, and our Assistant Pam McSherry. I'd like to start the meeting guys how we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get started here too, I want to read this really quickly. This meeting here has been posted in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20B. It's being recorded and will be posted on Area 58 Community Access Channel. The Board Chair reasonably anticipates the following matters will be discussed and are voted on at this meeting and the agenda items may be taken out of order for time management considerations. So without further ado, we'll just jump right down to the first part of our agenda here. And Bill, if you don't mind, you want to jump in for the affirmation approval of the warrants and commitments?
I move to approve, affirm approval of the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant number 6 for $298,703.44. Vendor warrant number 7 for $64,928.78. Withholding warrant number 8 for $87,439.88. Vendor warrant number 9 for $22,038.86. School warrant number 11 for $76,009.17. Ambulance commitments from 7/21/25 to 7/27/25 for $91,632.50. Ambulance commitments 7/28/25, 8/3/25 for $54,863.
Second.
Call those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass is unanimous.
I move to approve the following warrants. Payroll warrant number 10 for $1,091.95. Payroll warrant number 12 for $276,349.80. Vendor warrant number 13 for $263,214.34. Withholding warrant number 14 for $92,138.61. Mobile park fee number 8 for $5,160.00.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, pass is unanimous. All right, we'll jump down to A, the approval of selectmen minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the selectmen meeting minutes for June 24th, 2025 and July 22nd, 2025.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I have to abstain from the 22nd because I was...
Okay.
All right, separate them.
Well, separate them, yeah, okay. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the selectmen meeting minutes for June 24th, 2025.
Second.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass is unanimous. I'll entertain a motion to approve the selectmen meeting minutes for July 22nd, 2025.
So moved.
And I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstains? Abstain Bill?
Yep.
Yep, so passes 2-0. All right, next on our agenda, down to letter B, is Paul Buchane, here for the Eagle Scout Project. Paul, thank you for coming.
Hi, I'm Paul Buchane.
Yeah, I'm just going to move this microphone around Paul so that the public can hear you. All right?
All right. Hi, I'm Paul Buchane, I'm a Eagle Scout currently in 339 Halifax. So my proposal for my Eagle Scout project is refurbishment of the minor field dugouts. Those are like the concrete ones, if you don't know the field names. So this project would consist of four steps. The first would be cleaning dugouts, sweeping them, taking any trash out, removing it into the paint of all the concrete dugouts, and the removal of the trim, like the paint on the trim of the dugouts, like the wood trim. And then any broken or rotten beams supporting the fence of the dugout. The next step in my project would be repairing. So reapplication of the rubber roof lining which is coming up, as well as cleaning up the rest of the benches, sending the wood trim and application of mortar to any cracks in the concrete walls. The third step in the project would be painting. The step would including painting of benches, painting of the concrete walls, and the painting of the wood trims and beams on the roof. And then the fourth step with the project would be insulation. The step would consist of wood beams replacing the rotten ones previously removed and the installation of a small plaque with my name just saying, like referring to somebody. 339 Halifax. This project specifically means the world to me as I owe so much to my years in youth sports programs in Halifax, from baseball to basketball to soccer. Youth sports in the community truly had a positive impact and brought great joy and a purpose to my youth. With this project, I not only to get, hope to give back to the community, but that gave so much to me, but I also hopefully will give some of the experience I had to the kids in baseball and softball. So I already have this approved by Peter Veroni, who is the Director of Youth Baseball in Halifax, and all the funding will come from me and he's already pledged donations for the project.
Excellent. I think it's a great idea. Those dugouts are lovingly referred to as the prison dugouts because they are really, really snug and really, really needing some TLC. So I think it's a fantastic idea. And the thing I like about this, we have some great Eagle Scout projects, but sometimes, and it's not a fault of you guys, sometimes you create something that needs upkeep over and over and over, right? So this is a great project in that what you're doing is the upkeep. So I think that's terrific. And I think it's a great idea. Anything else from the board?
I would just add, and you kind of touched on it Paul, I think it's far reaching too. I mean, those fields are used by a lot of different kids throughout the course of the year. Baseball, softball, the Halifax Elementary School uses those fields for certain field days, activities. So it's far reaching. There's not just a limited number of people who might enjoy it, it's the town's children in general who will use those facilities, who will benefit. So I think that's a, probably not by accident that you chose that project, it's far reaching. I applaud the effort, so excellent, excellent choice.
How long is it going to take to do it?
About a week.
About a week?
Yeah.
And financially, it looks like, I mean, the app pay?
Yeah. Well, $500 total.
Great, great, great.
Good choice.
Yeah. Pete, how do you do?
Excellent.
All right. He got dolled up and he took care of it. That's great. So you need a, Paul, you need a vote from the selectmen to okay with the project?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Eagle Scout project by one Mr. Paul Buchane.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
Pass is unanimous. Thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No worries. Yeah, pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Young man. Shoot your hands to the community spirit, it was awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you. Take care. All right, from one cool project to another, we go from the Eagle Scout project to Mr. Dave Walsh is here for the Veterans Memorial update. Dave will switch the microphone over for you. And if you have an update for us, that'd be great.
My name is David Walsh and I'm here representing the Veterans of Foreign Wars of Halifax. I want first of all to applaud the community spirit, it's awesome. I was here last, last month and saw the same thing going. I also want to give a shout out by name.
Absolutely.
The Halifax Police Department. I live in Oak Street in Halifax. A couple of years ago, we had a couple of youngsters almost, almost killed right near Connor Brandeis where he had sex with Oak, right in front of my house almost. Since then, they have taken the bull by the horns and they've done wonderful. I've seen the speeders cut down almost, it's still some of course, but it's been really good. The policing has been awesome this time.
Good.
Okay, I'm here. I'm here representing the Veterans Foreign Wars to update you on memorial with proposed. I came here before you last month asking for your permission and you gave me permission to start, initiate it. So we have, we've ordered the bench. The bench is a polished granite bench, four feet long, two feet wide, two, four inches thick. And on the back part, it'll be a park bench. In the back, it'll say Joshua Aaron Curtis, straight across, 1986 to 2025, hero in combat, dot hero in life. As you know, his circumstances, so you know, you probably knows military record. I think, I think we're expecting the arrival to occur approximately the last week of this month, or the first week of September. Give or take, they may say that, you know, the inscription might be a little bit off. If they make a mistake, it'll tweak it a little bit, but that's what we expected.
Okay.
I consulted with Scott and Turner on this, about where we're going to place this bench. And he, we, we came up with the problem of the handicap accessibility regulations. Those benches all may, all may, all have to be moved, for all we know.
Yep.
There has to be some pathway so someone with a wheelchair can actually access it. And if, they can get themselves out or they have an assist, but they have to access it. So this, that may take, it may take a turn to go to the back here with what they're planning on putting the patio out there. So that's ongoing and I'll, if there's any, any change, I'll, I'll update you on, on the memorial. But as of right now, we, we would like to have set it right up by the rock on east and the lawn, the side lawn. But it doesn't look like we'll do it unless they decide to put the patio out there and put the accessibility. I'll have to update you on that. The dedication right now is set for Veterans Day at 11:00 AM.
Oh, great.
And I'll talk to, at length with Steve Littlefield. I've carried it this far, I said, Steve, it's on your phone maybe, so he's going to, he's going to carry it from there. I think he's going to invite Representative Turner.
Lenatra. Yep, Lenatra.
And a state senator, I'm a miss the same, I don't know who it is.
Brady. Senator Brady, yeah. Senator Brady.
Senator Brady's still ours here.
Yep.
I know we did a thing last year, plugged into the town hall.
Yep, yeah, he's still our senator.
So I assume he's probably with me.
We also have our representative Ken Suesi. So you want to invite both of our reps and our senators, that'd be great.
He'll face with you gentlemen and all the other celebrities and...
I know about that now, come on.
People are really, you know, these guys have come a long way. I have to give you that and I'm very, I'm very proud to live here. It's a nice little community. He'll help see, I will see, but he will, he will carry my back to see that his wife Barbara and his son Owen is there to do the dedication.
Great.
And I think that's probably all I can give you on an update at the moment.
Great.
Without anything, no pun intended, but there's, nothing's written in stone.
Well played, well played Dave. No, it sounds great. It sounds like we're making progress. I like that we're going to get it into the ground, you know, before the ground freezes over, you know, if we're going to have a, you know, a Veterans Day ceremony.
We are making progress. We've got it, it's ordered, it's on its way. And I've consulted with Swenson Memorals twice so far in the past month.
Great.
Everything is, everything is right along on time.
Great.
They, they're not facing any problems cutting and inscripting, so we should be fine.
Great, great.
They installed it too?
I'm sorry?
Are they installing it?
They are, yes sir. They, they have their own loading truck and winch, a heavy duty truck. They'll bring it here and they will set it down once we determine the place. And I've ordered, I don't know if I should have, but I did order an extra footing for it, so we, we'd set on both sides. If anything, we're on Mervis Law, we don't want to, so that's what's happening here.
Great, great, sounds very good. Any other questions from the board? No, thank you, thank you. I'll shake your hand too.
Thank you for your hand.
Yes, thank you. We're giving out hands.
I feel like an important man.
Yeah, you are.
I'm sorry, my left wing has been injured.
That's all right.
I can't really, so if I look a little weird...
No.
That's because I am.
Thank you, appreciate it Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
If you didn't mind, if I could sit in just a little bit, I really enjoyed the going, going to...
Sure, you're more than welcome to stay as long as you want.
You're the one, huh?
Yes. Usually people can't wait to run out of here, so it's nice that you want to hang around.
Steve, thanks.
Thank you. All right, moving on to letter D here, we're going to go to the ambulance abatements. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the ambulance abatement for June 2025 for $136,890.60 and July 2025 for $122,365.66.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass is unanimous. All right, we're moving down to E, which is the Asphalt Rubber Surface Treatment Contract with All States Construction. So the town went out to bid for a new three-year contract for road grade rubberized asphalt. It's what a lot of the communities are using now on their roadways. And we had one bidder here for All States Construction. So I believe you guys have the information there in your packet and they'd be looking for the board to approve the bid with All State Construction. I have some, Bob, you were great here, gave me some information. I have everything you've ever wanted to know about rubberized asphalt and the importance of rubberized asphalt. It's more durable than regular asphalt, lifespan can go up to 25% longer, it resists cracking and breaks better, fewer potholes, which I know everybody doesn't like potholes, nobody does, so that's great. Environmental impact, you recycle from old tires, it reduces landfill waste, so a lot of great things. I mean, I could keep going, there's noise reduction, there's safety, it's textured surface, so it's, it's better for the drivers hugging the road. And while it is a little bit more pricey, it can save money in the long run because it's not getting beat up as quickly as the non-rubberized stuff. So again, we'd be looking for a motion.
D, another question?
Yeah, go ahead.
What roads, it's going to be used on?
No, so this isn't for a specific project. This is just for the company will use for our projects for the, for this three-year time. We have a question there for the gentleman in the back. Can you come up sir and identify yourself?
You know I have a question.
I'm sure you do.
Frank Johnston, Elm Street. Two questions.
All right.
Value of the contract and term of the contract.
I know it's a three-year deal. And what, do you have the value Bob? I'll see if I can find it.
So it goes by prices per ton?
Yep.
Square yards, so it's... Price per square yard of the asphalt rubber surface treatment applied to the town roadway is $6.25 per ton.
$6.
Per square. Be great if it was a ton.
Yeah, that's a pretty cheap deal.
The second is the contractor shall provide all necessary crack sealing onto the roadways prior to the surface treatment using CRAF CO 201 Rubberized Crack Sealant. And that's price per square yard is $1.10. And option three, option two, is the contractor shall provide all necessary HMA shim leveling to the roadways prior to the surface treatment. Price includes application of a tack coat and that price per square yard is $225. So the price is, depends on the project itself, how long the road is and how it aligns.
So we took all three options, correct?
Correct.
What's the not to exceed value of the contracts is what I'm after.
It does.
An NTE on there, it's not an open-ended contract.
Right. Hold on, we'll see if we can find it for you Frank. Leave it to Johnston to always ask the question that everybody's got to find here.
You're going to ask those questions?
No, and that's why we love you Frank. Keep us on our toes.
We're going to talk about it in five years, so...
Yep. The one thing we got to consider too is unfortunate, unfortunately, but this was the only bid we received.
Yeah, that's a little concerning.
You know, so that, we're, I don't want to say our hands are tied, but our hands are kind of tied. Hold on.
Final payment, the owner shall make final payment constituting the entire unpaid balance of the contract sum, so they must identify it somewhere.
Yeah, there's got to be, yeah, we can't sign an open-ended contract without a not-to-exceed on...
Yep.
That's not what we're going to do.
And demunification waivers, just have lost.
So it's a unit cost contract by the square foot or square yard, so there's got to be some kind of a not-to-exceed number on that or they could just keep running down the road.
Right. I don't, I'm not seeing it guys, anybody seeing it? I don't see it.
Section 7 says contract sum, the owner shall pay the contractor's sums based on the price list and the work performed, subject to any additions or subtractions provided in this contract. So to me, does this indicate that they're not doing any work unless contracted by Steve Hayward in the Highway Department?
Right, is it contract, contractor contract, I would think.
Understood. Contract should have a not-to-exceed value.
Would that be subject to Steve's budget and/or proposal?
Would that be?
Sure. I don't know what, is he using the chapter 90 money?
Right.
Is it the operating budget of $300,000?
To Tom's point, and again, I'm not 100% here, but I think it's contract, I would think it's contract specific to the project.
Understand.
Right?
But there has to be a value there, not to go over it. Because otherwise, we're going to come to finance and say, oh, they're over by 100,000, we need a modification.
But isn't that tied to the specific contract of that specific project?
Each project.
Each project?
So...
You know, so this project, let's say, street...
What's the value of the project?
Depends on how many roads we finish.
Right, right.
So what's the value of the contract? We have to have a not-to-exceed number, I would think.
But that's, again, this is not specific project Frank, this is just who we're going to use for each specific project.
Understood, they have a rank schedule.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't know what that was. So the, the...
So the highway has to run around a million dollars on the road.
No, because they have chapter 90 funds that kind of limit that.
Understand.
Of what they can use. So that, you know what their ballpark is.
Right.
To use.
I get both sides of this.
They'll use as much as they can.
Why would that be written into the contract then, not to exceed $554,000 or whatever we're getting this year?
You mean like the, the final number of chapter 90?
So not to exceed...
Right.
Value of the contract. And then they come back in the spring and say, you know, guys, you know, it's end of budget season and, you know, July's coming around and we've got these extra road bills that we ran out of money for on this contract, we need another $80,000 for, whatever it might be.
Well, tell you what, section 4 indicates effective start date and a date mutually agreed by the contractor in the town, said date not later than August 7, which we are passed.
Yeah.
So is there any harm in delaying this to substantiate the answers to Frank's question? Is there a detriment to putting this off two weeks?
Yeah, we want to...
Re-bid it?
No, not re-bid it, get clarification.
Clarification before we sign off on it.
On the question or any others that might come up before we sign into contract with the company.
I'm just concerned about, there's no end value to this contract. It's open, to me, it's an open-ended value, total value of a contract. Whether you do a one road or 12 roads in town.
Right, and again, I almost view it as, it's a retainer, you know, with this company. Not a retain, there's no set money set to it, but whatever project we have coming down the road, we're agreeing that this is the company we will use.
Right.
This is the rates we're going to use. And Steve will, will have a set value for each project that they can't go over. So I think we're, we're insuring ourselves in each individual contract. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, you kind of led me to another good point where you, I thought you were going to say it and you kind of started, we retain legal counsel with a budget. The rates are set forth, if we exceed the budget by reasonable means, that's over the budget.
Right.
So to Frank's point, he's concerned about the not-to-exceed limit, but really, we're not approving any amounts to be done or the work to be performed.
Correct.
We're retaining this company for the work that is agreed to be performed at a later time.
At agreed rates.
Right. I see your point though. And I'm, if there's no harm, we could just table it until we get the answer.
Yeah.
I don't think there's an answer to that. There's no, there's no ultimate answer.
Right.
Other than what you, we hold our department heads responsible to stay within their budget. So if they, if they have a budget of say $450,000 from chapter 90 funds, that's all they can expend and they can't go higher than that.
Right.
But department heads are obligated to stay within the budget.
So these are, these are, these contracts are out there all the time. You know, we, we are bidding on a amount and price per amount and not price per project. It'd be different if we were just bidding to, to resurface Plymouth Street.
Right.
And then they'll have to come out and measure it and say, yeah, then, then we'll give bids just for that.
Right.
But this is a three-year, over the three-year period.
No, and I understand that.
Locking in these rates.
I understand that, but I've never written an open contract with no dollar value attached that's called a not-to-exceed and NTE attached to that contract.
Well, to Tom's point, like again, with legal, you know, with our, with our council, we, we bind into a contract with them for a set fee. We don't, we don't then tell them, hey guys, we're not, we don't have an FTE on our legal budget. You know, it's as, is as happens, right? So I don't, I don't think it would be in the town's best interest to assign a hard number when we don't know what projects we're going to be dealing with. Maybe we get more chapter, it's not usually going to happen, but maybe we get more chapter 90 or we stumble onto some other funding. If we set a hard cap, that might be detrimental to, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I just, contracts I've never signed, one of them, I've signed hundreds in my life of very large contracts. And they all have had a dollar value assigned to them of, typically when it's a unit rate contract, particularly those have a not-to-exceed number.
Yeah.
Without a change where.
In municipal world.
Yeah.
It's all different.
I don't think, I got to be honest, I don't think I've seen a not-to-exceed on any of our, you know, when it's a situation like this.
Unless you're building something and then you get a...
A specific project, yeah.
When it's an open end for three years to do a specific thing for the town, you don't know. And again, you know, we'll hold the department heads responsible for that.
Do we already do business with this company? Is this an extension of a current contract or is this a new, is new vendor for us?
Hmm, I am not sure.
Before I got here.
Yeah, I'm not positive.
Is this a change where, Tom, to an existing contract?
No, no, it's a new...
No, new. It's a new bid. And again, the only, the only bid we received. But I mean, if it's not time sensitive to, to address Frank's concern, I'm okay with...
I don't know what they're doing, but...
Yep.
We've already passed the deadline of the start date.
Right.
Several days.
So they may be putting things off.
Yep. Yeah, that is true.
Just working out from being on the finance committee and watching our dollars and cents.
Oh, absolutely.
I know, I already know what our chapter 90 money is, but.
More, more than what we thought, which is great.
It's more money than we thought, which is out there plus the 300, so I know how much we're working with for roads.
Yeah.
Or other issues associated with roads, not specifically for doing asphalt.
The only.
Could be used for other things associated with roads.
The only thing to Bob's point, this is a very popular time of year to do roadwork.
Understand.
And it makes me a little bit nervous. I don't know what Steve's schedule is, if he has projects between now and two weeks from now, if we're gonna, if we're gonna hold him up. So I don't know how, there's a.
I think he's expecting this signing.
No, it's, I mean, it's a valid point.
Any harm in adding it to a future agenda inside of two weeks? Should there be another agenda inside of two weeks?
I mean, we are, we are looking to meet next week. We could.
You have Steven?
We could have Steven real quick if he's got a, yeah.
Why don't we move it up by a half hour?
I don't think it's going to show a number of.
Well, we can get clarification to that.
Yeah.
Maybe we bump the meeting up by a half hour, put Steve on first.
Right.
Delay it. Not instead of two weeks, we do it four days and get it done on that day.
That's better, I like that idea. Yeah.
It works.
Okay, so we are, yeah, no, I appreciate you asking the questions, Frank. We are planning to have a meeting Monday, the 18th. So.
Split the difference.
You know, we'll split the difference and we'll try to get that question answered and vote on this for that meeting, so it won't tie him up too much.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, no problem.
In the event that Steve can't make the meeting in person, maybe we could get some answers as to the questions prior.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I understand, I feel that we understood a little bit.
Sure.
From a financial standpoint.
Sure, sure.
You'll have to answer questions later, so.
Sure. All right, so we're gonna table that and we're gonna jump down to E on the agenda, which is, I know that was E. Now we're going to F, which is road openings. We have two road openings, one for 664 Mon Ponsett Street and one for 318 Plymouth Street. And Pam, I know you said we switched over to a new software now. Excuse me, that monitors approvals and the approval status is us, board of selectmen and conservation are the last to approve. So if you guys have a chance to look at it, I would entertain a motion to approve the road openings for 664 Mon Ponsett Street and 318 Plymouth Street pending approval by the conservation commission.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes 3-0. All right, we're heading down now to G, which is the library board of trustees discussion on compensation to fill in for absences. Let me pull this up here. Sue Hill is here with the library trustees.
Susan Hill.
You have the floor.
Stoneway Road, I'm the library chair, trustee chair. Whereas the Holmes Public Library Director Dylan Benoit, who has only recently been hired, is expected to take a three-week paternity leave upon the birth of his baby, which is due September 29th, but he's concerned it may happen sooner.
Well, he's at library, so you can't be overdue.
That's true.
That has to be, has to be returned.
We know you're bad.
It just came to me.
The library trustees would like to confirm that Maria Bumpfis will be acting director for the duration of Dylan's leave, which is expected to be a minimum of three weeks and could be longer if there are any complications with the birth of his child. Maria will be compensated at the same rate as when she was interim director during our director search this past spring. The library trustees have voted on this and decided that is how we wanted to handle it. Dylan has not worked long enough to have paternity leave paid, so he will be taking whatever time that he has to take off in an unpaid position. So we want Maria to be fairly compensated for the work that she does over those three weeks because we don't expect Dylan to be able to respond to any issues.
He'll, he'll be busy.
In the library.
Yeah.
On a related note, Dylan has talked with Gene Galant about doing fill-in hours when he's gone. And it was decided that she, if she were to do so, it would be at the substitute librarian rate, not the rate that she received in the springtime when she was helping Maria.
Okay.
Transition.
Okay. Do you, you don't know offhand, Sue, what that rate is, ballpark, substitute library rate?
$18.88.
Okay. Okay.
I'm not familiar enough to know FMLA rules. This, this is in line with FMLA and paternity leave, maternity leave, no matter, no matter the tenure, they're not entitled to FMLA for a birth of a child?
He is not entitled to anything for, for the town until January and he's not entitled to federal until next July.
I don't think she's going to want to hold on to that kid till January, so.
No.
No, it's coming.
So the suggestion theoretically, I'm not familiar with the interim rate, but this is at least a wash from the town's perspective, the interim rate versus Dylan.
If not a savings.
Right.
That would be a savings.
I would expect it to be a savings.
Minus whatever gene substitution.
Correct.
And we did.
Correct. All right, any other questions for Sue from the board?
Best, best wishes to Dylan and family.
Yes, absolutely.
First in love with that.
He said that they had already had a, an ultrasound and the baby is very large now.
Oh.
So although the baby is expected, the due date is September 29th, I think he's expecting that it will happen sooner rather than later.
Okay, so it's good we get this squared away now.
Right.
Appreciate it.
Wanted to make sure it was taken care of.
Sure.
Makes sense.
We don't need, okay, ahead, Bob.
So you want to also mention about the open house and the come-to-meet?
The library trustees have decided to have an open house, a meet and greet for Dylan. We wanted to make sure that he eased into the job before we threw all of the time spoke at him, all of he has been meeting, you know, the regulars at the library, you know, on a regular basis since he started about three weeks ago.
Yeah.
Months.
Yeah.
So our open house is the 25th of August, from 4 to 5. There will be some refreshments and, you know, we're hoping that Dylan's wife will also be able to join us.
So it's, it's a baby shower, is what you're telling me?
Yeah, yes.
That's great.
Also a nice run-up in the July newsletter about the hiring of Dylan.
Great.
His background and so forth.
Great.
He's, he has.
He seems great, yeah.
Really fantastic.
Good guy.
Done a great job, yeah.
He has had to deal with, again, one of the bathroom issues.
Yeah.
You know, and he took care of it, you know, as we would expect a director to take care of it, so.
Yeah, no, he's got a great talk with him a little bit, great personality, seems like a good add to the town, so I'm excited that he's going to be able to grow with us. And he's got a growing family. Is it his first child, do you know?
First child.
Oh, it's a game changer. So, no, we wish him well. And you don't need any motion or anything from us.
No.
Just giving us an update on it.
Okay.
Awesome.
Thanks.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you much.
I'm hanging around with them.
Go right ahead. Go right ahead. All right, so we're going down to H, which is letter of MBTA non-compliance. So we received the letter, let me see if I can find it somewhere here. Thank you, sir. And I'll just read this into the record, just so folks at home can hear it. This is from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. It's addressed to our interim town administrator, Robert Fennessy. It says, Dear interim town administrator Fennessy, I am writing to notify you for the reason explained below, Halifax remains non-compliant with section 3A. On January 8th, 2025, the Supreme Judicial Court published its opinion in the case of Attorney General versus Town of Milton, confirming that section 3A is constitutional and valid and that the Attorney General does have the power to enforce it. The court also held that the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities must prom, whoa, that's a tough one. Promulgate, promulgate the laws implementing guidelines through the Administrative Procedure Act. In response, the EOHLC promulgated 760 CM, I'm sorry, CMR 72.00, multi-family zoning requirement for MBTA communities regulations. The regulations can be viewed at mass.gov backslash MBTA communities. The regulation set a date of July 14th, 2025 for Halifax to submit a district compliance application. Halifax did not, as of right, did not have, as of right, multi-family zoning and did not submit a district compliance application requesting a determination of district compliance by this deadline. Halifax was previously non-compliant with section 3A because it did not submit an action plan to the EOHLC in 2025 to achieve interim compliance. Halifax remains non-compliant with section 3A, and that's in bold. As the Supreme Judicial Court held in Attorney General versus Town of Milton, compliance with the law is mandatory and enforceable by the Attorney General. Attorney General Andrea Campbell has issued two advisories for MBTA communities in March 2023 and July 2025, which can be viewed, which can be read here, and there's a link. EOHLC will continue to work with you to ensure that Halifax can achieve compliance. If you have questions or need further assistance regarding this determination, please contact the MBTA Communities Compliance Coordinator and it is signed Edward Augustus Jr., Secretary for the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. So just an update on where we stand with the MBTA. We are currently in the process of litigation, so we can't really get into too, too much of what, what's going on, but we'll keep you guys informed as we hear back from the state. Just wanted to let you guys know that, that the state is responding to us. They are not pleased and that's kind of the, the reality that we're starting to see right now as far as the MBTA zoning goes. Any comments or anything from the board?
No, I just, that's a format, that's a formality, you know, not, no surprises that we're receiving the letter. We kind of knew that's where we were. We had some choices to make, to get an interim compliance and we declined to do so. That's, so I'm not surprised to receive the letter.
Yep.
Tommy, he was loud and clear, so.
Yep.
So, yeah.
Yep, so. And it was CC to Senator Brady, Representative Suesi and Representative Lanatra. So we'll keep you guys informed. Again, the legal issues are not done, so as soon as we hear back from the state with our latest legal status, we will let you guys know when we hear. Anything else, Bob, to add to that one?
No, I have something in my.
In your town report, okay. All right, great. Okay, going down to I, Thorndike Development Corp., second amendment to development agreement. So this is an amendment to our original agreement with the Thorndike Development Corporation, which is the development over on Route 58, over near, what's the, Grill 58 and that area. So essentially what has happened is both sides, both the town and Thorndike, have kind of fallen a little bit behind on the original dates of the original agreement. So this is an update and an amendment to essentially make sure that those dates have been pushed back a little bit so that we remain both in agreement and both, what's the legal word? Legally okay on both sides as far as our target dates for what we need happening. None of the financials have changed in the original agreement. It's still set up the same way, but what we did was in order to make sure that we're in compliance with a date that is both true to the town and true to Thorndike, it essentially moves it back to make sure that we can both be in agreement on the, on the amendment. Any questions or anything from the board?
So just to be abundantly clear, no financial ramifications either way?
Correct.
Money's not moving, dates are the only thing impacting.
Correct.
On both side, give and take on both sides.
Correct. I think a little bit of this was the, the regulatory process in Halifax took Thorndike a little longer than they thought, so it kind of pushed their construction back a little bit. We also had some communication hiccups a little bit with our, the company that's our project manager that kind of set us back a little bit. So we're, we're now trying to correct both of those and move forward so that it can be a, a date that both parties can be okay with. Did I hit that right, Bob?
Exactly.
Excellent.
Exactly.
What, what's the date?
Um, October.
October 1st, 2025.
Yep, October 1st. It was originally August 1st, Sue, so obviously that's come and gone. So we've now pushed that back to October 1st, that the town's going to be soliciting bids for a design of the, the senior center project, so.
Oh, 2025, you know?
Yes, yes. So and we have essentially the next two, two months to, to get those, those bids solicited, so.
So I need a motion to.
Yeah, I'm just, anything else, guys? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the second amendment to development agreement and authorize our town administrator, Bob Fennessy, to sign said agreement.
So moved. Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, passes unanimous. All right, we are down now to actually our town administrator update. Mr. Bob Fennessy, you have the floor.
Thank you for the floor. Okay, yeah, the first thing, and we talked about this earlier, about chapter 90 money. And the, the state has awarded, well, our award for Halifax is $434,179.8 is the basic general apportionment. And they, they had a supplemental this year, which was nice.
That is nice.
Of $121,364.73. So a total, chapter 90, and chapter 90 can be considered highway funds, it used to be called, of $555,543.81.
That's great.
So that's, should get some work done.
Great.
You know, with that, so we're very pleased with the increase on that. Uh, next thing I have is that the, I have a notification from 3M. You may remember the PFAS lawsuits that were going on. Well, they settled, that one, one company settled. And as such, a town will receive a first of a series of payments from 3M settlement over several years. This payment that's coming shortly, probably within the next week or two, is $93,654.67. So that's a, a nice chunk of change.
How many years do they?
Uh, they didn't say in the letter how many years, they just said several years.
And do you know, Bob, does that have to be earmarked for certain?
It doesn't.
PFAS stuff, no?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think in terms of like the laylaw, I mean, the landfill.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
My town's laylaw landfill.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, so the landfill here that may, you know, use some of that money.
Sure.
Fix.
Do you mind, Bob, we had a quick question over there, is that okay?
Yeah.
Frank Johnston?
Jones and Jones, we're in the finance committee. So we had just done a transfer at the end of fiscal for $19,000 to increase the contract value for sampling. Will this money be utilized for the additional sampling going forward? And we also have the, gonna need money for the repair of the, the cap over there. Is that what we're gonna earmark this for?
That's the idea. I mean, it's up to the town.
Select.
Yeah, but I, I mean, to me, Frank, it, it seems like it's.
Don't want it to disappear in the general fund.
No, no, I would.
Doesn't it go to cap, doesn't it go to the reserve fund?
It doesn't go to the reserve fund. It would go into the capital fund.
General fund.
Yes, and then be dropped out of there.
Yeah.
Because we've got significant issues with the landfill up here and this contract came out of nowhere for $19,000. We're blindsided by that on PIN call.
Yeah. I would like, I don't want to speak for the board, but I, to me, it makes sense to, to somehow get that money over there because it's a PFAS issue that we're collecting money on and we're dealing, you know, we're, we're keeping an eye on PFAS over there, so.
Yep.
I feel like it's a natural marriage.
Correct, because we don't know how long the state and the EPA is going to require us to do sampling. It's going to be based on what results are on the quarterly semis and annual sampling.
Correct.
And then they may say, well, we want to see three more years of sampling before we'll kick you back to once a year or twice a year or something like that, but at a minimum, it's going to be on a quarterly basis.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially since they keep lowering the, the.
The allowable amount.
That's correct.
You know, it's down to almost, it'll be, it'll be zero pretty soon.
Well, it's, it's working its way that direction, correct.
Yeah. I mean, to me, it just makes.
But you're never going to get zero.
Right, right. But it just makes sense to tie those two things together.
Yeah, so $93 is a one-time thing?
$93,000.
No, no. From what I understand, it probably, Halifax's amount will be somewhere in the $400,000 vicinity.
Overall.
Overall.
Yeah.
After, after legal fees and other things.
$93,000. $93,000, first one. But it's going to help us a lot with some of the financial issues associated with landfill we didn't account for in the budgets this year.
And remember, that's only one company and it's multiple companies that are in this lawsuit. So now that that one's fallen, which was the biggest one, the others hopefully will fall too and then more checks will be coming in.
Good.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Great.
Um, very nice. The police department.
Mm-hmm.
Speed sign took a little hit the other day.
Yes, it did.
And it was demolished. It's, it's no good anymore. Value is about $15,000.
This is the one on front of the police station?
No, no, it's a portable one.
Oh, trailer bagged one?
Yeah, good. So the, there's a claim with the insurance company for that, so hopefully we'll be able to get a new one.
Good.
Uh, to come for that. The, it wasn't a speed, it should have been, huh?
How'd that seem for irony, right?
Hopefully we go over.
No, it was, it was, it was an accident that happened. It was not a, any, any violation of law, so.
Trying to think of where it was, was it?
Where was it stationed, any idea?
Do you know?
58106?
I think it was by Curtins Oil, that's where it was stationed right there.
Yes, okay.
And God, get a check, a check should be coming in the mail. Um, attention me.
Oh, wow. Paid to the order of, huh?
Yeah. Yeah, no, um, yeah, um, our Mr. Colby here today, so we'll get that.
Great. Great.
Yeah.
Okay, and a couple things on the MBTA, since we've talked about that, too. Early on, in late July, I think it was July 29th, the legislature held hearings before the Joint Commission on Municipalities on three bills authored by Representative Suesi, about our representative, House 2338, 2339, and 2340. All three bills related to modifying or repealing the MBTA Act. I submitted written testimony on behalf of the Board of Selectmen supporting Representative Suesi's bills, from what I understand, has not yet come out of committee. I don't, I don't have much hope that it's gonna come out with, let's get rid of this at this stage, but you never know. So it depends who's on the committee and who's working that, so. So that's one thing. The second thing, which, which kind of hits home now, got an email today, good afternoon, well, not really. DOE R, that's the Department of Energy, right?
Yep.
Has completed its review and evaluation of the Green Communities Competitive Grant applications submitted last May. While the town was selected to receive a grant of $61,608 toward energy efficiency projects in municipal and school buildings, we are unable to award the funds due to the town's noncompliance status with Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 3A, the MBTA Communities Act. And then there's a letter that came, and, I'll, I'll actually read it, short, short letter. So this is from the Department of Energy Resources, and it was to me, I don't know why they're all picking on me.
Yeah. You wanted the job, Fennessy.
I don't know what the word interim means.
Yeah.
Dear Manager Fennessy, we are receipt of Halifax Green Communities Spring 2025 Competitive Grant Application. Awards under this program are contingent upon municipality being able to certify that will comply with all applicable laws, including Mass General laws. We understand that the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities has determined that Halifax is out of compliance with General Law 40A, Section 3A. To be eligible to receive awards under the Green Communities Competitive Grant Program, town would need to remediate this noncompliance. If circumstances have changed such, such that Halifax expects to be in compliance with state law by September 30th, please notify us. Without the required certification, town will not receive the Green Competitive Grant, but may be eligible to apply for grants from the program in the future. Please do not hesitate to call if you have any questions. So, so I think that's the first one we've.
Yeah, that's kind of the first, first official rejection.
Yeah.
First of many problems, yeah.
And what I'm gonna do, we have a department head meeting this week, I'm gonna ask each department head to compile a list of any grants that they rely on, please, by anybody else that, that may, may get grants from the state, just so we have a handle on how much this is.
Sure.
That's gonna be made up some other way, so.
Yep. Frank, Frank Johnston?
Johnston?
Should know your address by now.
Continue to submit grants, correct? We're not gonna stop.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Some may go through, some may not.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
I understand it.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, it's not like the department has to stop thinking because we got it.
Nope.
No, I know, yeah.
No, we'll still keep trying. Although, and I haven't seen the applications on a lot of them, but I have heard that at the top, it's got a big check mark, are you, are you a big box at the top that says, are you compliant with MBTA?
Can't lie, yeah.
You know, you know, fortunately, they know our status right now, so.
And I know a couple people said first of many, or first of several to follow, but I'm hoping that the department heads are not quote unquote relying on this because this is not a surprise.
Right.
So we might be, need to be prepared to have had this happen, but this is not like we didn't expect it, we knew this was gonna happen in December, or likely to happen in December, so I'm hoping budgets have been prepared as such that, you know, there might be some difficult decisions and some shortfalls, but not unexpected ones, is what I would like to comment.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, the, the town spoke, I mean, the Board of Selectmen is clear, we got the message loud and clear, you know, we were all at that meeting where there was a heavy, heavy, heavy majority that were not for this, but again, we, we did warn the community that this is a distinct reality.
Absolutely.
And it wasn't a scare tactic, and it wasn't, we just wanted to give those folks some foresight as to what was coming. Again, we have some, some legal matters that are still needing attending to, we'll see how those go, and we'll, we'll deal with the results when they come in.
Yeah, one more thing.
Go ahead.
So just to wrap up.
Yeah.
I just wanna say that I just finished my one month yet.
Yay!
I feel like I've been here for six years.